Welcome, I'm calling to order this meeting of the Monroe County Public Library Board of Trustees. As usual, we'll start by introducing ourselves, and if you care to share what you're reading, please do. Fred, start us off, please.
Hi, I'm Fred Reisinger. It wasn't a very good book at all, and so I'm not going to give a reward to it. I do want to take the time to reward the people that work upstairs. I lost my library card, and I went in there today, and very efficiently, and in almost no time at all, I have a new library card. That staff up there works very, very well.
Thank you, Fred.
I am not in the middle of any book right now, I'm busy writing papers for a class, but I am vacationing next week, and I have checked out a good stack of Young Hoosier books that I plan on reading on vacation.
I'm Marilyn Wood, and I have been perusing a large stack of cookbooks, trying to find new low-carb recipes.
I'm John Walsh, I'm reading The Razor's Edge by William Somerset Maum.
It's erudite books. I'm David Ferguson, and I just finished An Eye for an Eye by Ben Coe's, and it's like one of those novels you would pick up before you get on an airplane, and have it finished by the time you land, but it was great.
Thank you, everyone. Our first item is the consent agenda, in which we approve minutes, monthly financial report, monthly bills for payment, personnel reports, and our meeting calendar. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion or corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. And now to Marilyn for highlights from her monthly director's report.
Well, as you can see, we're into summer now, so summer reading is a big activity that's going on right now, and related sorts of virtual programming. The other big thing that our staff is concerned with right now is just in restarting services. So with the changes recently in mask mandates and more open areas, we've made some changes of our own. We became optional for mask-wearing for all of our staff as of Monday of this week, right? The 14th. In addition to that, we have been slowly and deliberately reintroducing services, including more furniture in the spaces. We have dates now scheduled for when Level Up, and the teen space will open on July 5th. Our meeting rooms will open on the 19th, and we will be resumed, excuse me, July 19th. This is still June. But closer to now, on June 21st, we will be moving back to permanent hours of service. So it will be nine to nine here at the main library from Monday through Thursday, and nine to seven at Elletsville, and then the regular hours of 10 to 6 Friday, Saturday, and 12 to 6 on Sunday. And beginning on June 21st as well, we will be dropping all limits to capacity and the amount of time spent in the building. So a lot of undoing or redoing to move furniture and get prepared for providing services again that have been long awaited. I'm happy to answer any questions.
I have a question, not as a board member, but also a patron of the library. How will this affect the online programming that the library's been doing?
The virtual programming? We are continuing with virtual programming through the summer, we already have several of those in place, and then we'll be reviewing it as we move forward in the fall. There will certainly be more in-person programming, we hope, beginning around September or so, but there has been a fair amount of happiness and hopes that we will continue some of the programming that's virtual, so we're going to evolve.
My daughter had the opportunity to participate in making the dog toys for the shelter the other day, and she loved it. I thought that was a great program, a way to serve the community, and I thought, I hope things like that continue, because it was really nice and flexible for us as parents, just be able to schedule and pick that up ahead of time, and let her sit and make the toys.
It is. The Take and Make kits are a huge hit. And the other piece about the virtual programming, particularly for families, is that with some of those that are on YouTube now, you can watch them anytime, so you don't have to abide by the schedule that we might have, which is always very useful for families. So, yeah, we've learned a lot of things through the process, and there's no doubt it will be one of those areas that we continue to evolve.
Other questions for Marilyn? Thank you. And now we're very happy to welcome Dr. Thomas A. Morrison, Vice President for Capital Planning and Facilities at Indiana University. Vice President Morrison has overseen the planning and construction of all the major capital projects on campus, and I guess throughout the IU system, for the past decade or so, including Luddy Hall, where I have my office for my day job, so thank you for that. And Vice President Morrison's here to talk to us about fundraising and naming opportunities, so welcome.
Glad to be here. Let me make sure the mic's on. Thank you for having me tonight. My pleasure to be here, my pleasure to be here in person, and be able to talk to you in person. So one of the things that you wanted to inquire about is the naming of facilities and the fundraising that goes with this, and for the most part, how we establish names at the university. So, as John said, I'm Vice President for Capital Planning at Indiana University, but one of the duties I have is I co-chair the university's naming committee. And so one of your questions would be the obvious thing, is, well, do you have policies regarding naming? We have policies for everything at the university, but we do have a university naming policy, and it is online, so if you get onto the policy website for IU, you'll find it. And so every space and every program that gets named at the university conforms to this policy. So even if we name a building after a tree, that gets reviewed. And so, and of course, if it's named after a person. So names can be, they can be, at the lowest end, they could be working names, something we name just as we're about to build something. We're building a residence hall up just south of Simon Scott Assemblé Hall right now. We started out by calling that North Hall. We knew it wasn't going to stay North Hall. It's now Walnut Grove. But, so a working name would be a direction, or something like that. Then an administrative name would be something like Walnut Grove. So it's to say, it's Walnut Grove Residence Hall, so it talks about what it is, and its function, but it also has the name that goes with it. Let me back up for a second. The university's naming committee, as I said, is co-chaired. I work on the spaces in buildings of the university, and my co-chair, who is Vice President John Applegate, works on the academic programs and departments and names of things like that. And so that's how we divide it up, but that's unique to us in higher education. The committee is made up of senior leaders at the university, and we have the ability to rely on naming advisory committees, and I'll talk about that in a little bit. Names can be submitted to the committee for review, but they don't come from just anybody. They have to come from the chancellor of a campus, or in our case here in Bloomington, the provost of a campus, or one of the vice presidents of the university. And so a group can bring a name to him or her for review, and then that would then, following their approval, get sent to the committee to review. From us, we approve or disapprove, or send it back to be worked on a little bit more. And then it would go to, but if we approve it, it would then go to the president and possibly the Board of Trustees, depending on the level, the size of the space that's being named, or the prominence of it, or policies that go with that. So I talked about working name, I talked about administrative names, but I think what you probably want to ask about is how do we name spaces, or programs, or departments after people? And as a function of fundraising. And I'll talk about spaces here for a little bit. We can name spaces or buildings after, that can either be commemorative or memorial. Commemorative speaks to benefactors, it speaks to philanthropy, in terms of people's donations to a particular program or space, and I'll talk about those levels. Memorial has to do with naming something after a person or persons who were prominent parts of the university, prominent in the history of the university. One of the things that we have as a policy is what's called the five-year rule. And this has really served us well, and it's going to sound a little morbid, but we do not consider naming a space after a person until they've been dead for five years. And this was a rule, or a policy, that Herman Wells put into place a long time ago, because there was such a great love for Herman Wells. He became aware that people wanted to name things after him, and he thought that should only happen after he was gone, and after there was a period of enough time where the emotion of the passing wouldn't influence people's impressions. And it has been such a good guidepost for us, because that is so true, that you find out when there is a tragedy, or someone who passes who we think is so prominent to the history of the university, and they may be, but we want to get past that mourning period, and let the history speak for itself at some point in time. And so that has really helped us in terms of those memorial namings. Benefactor namings obviously don't have to be that, they can be named after a living people, and that has to do with philanthropy. So how do we decide, you know, what the size of a gift is to name a space? And it's actually fairly simple. We look at the replacement value of a space, as in what it would take to build it new. So that covers us in terms of if we're going to name a building after a person, we take the value to build that building, so let me, I'll use the residence hall as another one. That residence hall is costing $75 million. We look at a percentage of that, and so we say 20% of the replacement value. And so 20% of that would be $15 million. So if someone were to donate $15 million to the university, we would consider putting a name on that complex. Sometimes those, we want to raise as much money as possible, as you probably do. And so we don't want people going to the lowest common denominator, we want the fundraisers going to the highest common denominator. And so there are sometimes that spaces are very prominent, and we may raise that percentage. We may say, it's never below that 20, but it may be higher than if it's a prominent space. And say, well, that's pretty simple for a new building to figure out, but how do you do renovations and things like that? And same thing. So if you wanted to name this room right here, we would figure out the square footage of this room, what it would cost on average to build it new, take 20% of that, and that's your minimum naming value. But it's not the cost of the renovation, we get asked that question a lot. So if someone were to come forth and say, well, I'll donate the audiovisual equipment for the room, and maybe thinking about, well, maybe you'll name the room after me, that's not the way we do it. Some places do do it that way, we don't. Because again, we're trying to raise as much philanthropy as possible. And so we set that amount at 20% of the replacement value. Like I said, sometimes it may be a little bit higher. There are ever so often, we look at lower amounts on the regional campuses, where fundraising is a little bit more difficult, but not very often. And so that's our standard floor of what we look at. The other question you might have is, do the names last forever? And we do name in perpetuity, until the space is, until the space is no longer there, or it could be repurposed. So, I'll give you an example of that. So if the building, if this building were to be torn down eventually, in our world, those names would all go away. If we repurpose it, so if somebody were to donate to a specific program, and that program goes away, or that department goes away, potentially the name could go away as well. But we do look at names in perpetuity. It is becoming a trend that certain philanthropists will say to us, I don't want my name in perpetuity, because I want to give you the opportunity to raise money again. And so they'll say, put it on for a fixed number of years. And that's becoming a trend. And so our policy accounts for that, but we start from in perpetuity. One of the other questions you might have is, how do you know that somebody is worthy for naming on a space? Is it just about money, or is it just about somebody who's been prominent? And there is, as part of the process, you know, a summary background investigation that's done of those people. So the person who's proposing, that person can't say to the naming committee, they're a good person, I met them, you know, a few times, we had dinner. We want to know their background, we want to know their business background, any issues that might be out there. And so we do do an investigation in that regard, and that has served us well. The partner question to that is, do you ever remove names? And I think if you've followed our news in the last year or so, we've removed the Jordan name, and so the answer to that is obviously yes. And there may be a few others coming. As President McRobbie formed a committee, as an advisory committee to ours, to look at names on each of the campuses, because some of those names that have been part of the university's history were named decades ago, and now things are uncovered that may not have either been accounted for then, or different point in history, where certain things may have been socially looked at a different way. And so we do look at removing names, and we take that very seriously. And we have had instances where we have removed names, and also returned gifts, whereby an individual may have donated money to a particular program, and then committed some crime, and maybe that money may have been, at the time, ill-gotten gains, and we may return that to rightful owners, or something like that. So we do take all of that very seriously. But I'm given the impression that naming at the university is very prescriptive, and it is. We're a very big place, with multiple campuses. Lots of people have thoughts about what they want those names to be, and who they want to be named after, and we do want to maintain the ability for philanthropy, but we also want to maintain the ability to respect the university's history. One of the ways that we also, the five-year rule that we talk about, there are times that if there's a really minor space, a small space, we don't apply the five-year rule to some of those. If there was a small seminar room, we've had those named after faculty members who have retired after 40 years, and who were prominent in certain departments. But in the most cases, philanthropy. Let me stop there. I'm doing this, Marilyn, I'm doing, your question's off the top of my head, so let me know if I haven't covered anything that you wanted me to cover, or can I answer any questions for you?
So basically, when you rename or remove a name, you still have a policy, or you just have an advisory committee that kind of is guided by a policy, or guided by comments, discussion?
They are guided by a charge, if you will. So in this case, President McRobbie asked, on consideration of the Jordan name, asked a specific committee to research and bring to the committee and to him a recommendation regarding that name. And it was an extremely well-done piece of research.
And then does it go up the chain of command, basically, in terms of?
Basically, yes.
You recommend, and it goes to the?
We approve, and then the president will approve, and then it will go to the Board of Trustees, and they will take the action accordingly. We've done that in my time, I've been at the university for, going on 13 years now, the number of names we've removed is below a dozen. It doesn't happen very often, but it does happen.
Do you have a kind of a history of all the buildings and all the things?
We do.
Wow. That have been named through the century?
Yes. So we have a database, it's managed out of an area that's in my portfolio, and we know what the names are, and we generally know who they are. Every once in a while, we have to have somebody in the library and the archives kind of research, you know, who is Smith?
Yeah. Lester Smith?
You know, and we're never sure on everything, so we do have a database of those.
You mentioned the name going away if a building is demolished or repurposed, but does the name travel with, you know, if a building's demolished to build a new one for the similar purpose somewhere else? Like if Herman B. Wells Library is demolished to build a new university library, does the name travel to the new?
It wouldn't be required to. So now, you know, the example you give, we want to have a library named after Herman Wells, yes. But generally not. But if it stays this, I'll give you another example. Sembauer Baseball Field was named after a former coach long ago, I think 1930s. And so when Sembauer Baseball Field became Sembauer Field to be used for recreation, because we built a new baseball field, we didn't move the Sembauer name. And that's a great example, because we were able to generate philanthropy for Kaufman Field, for building the new field, but we kept the Sembauer name on the recreation field. So Sembauer Field is still there. We probably could have taken the approach of taking the name off, but we didn't, because it was still a field, you know, even though it wasn't being used for baseball.
Thank you.
You answered the questions that we posed previously, but certainly, there may be others.
Yeah, it turned out it's very easy. You say you have like a straight 20%, but varies up or down. I thought it would be more complex than that.
No, the important thing is there is that it's 20% of today's value. Someone will always look at and say, well, it costs you to build the library however many decades ago, you know, they'll want to work off of that. And so we do 20% of today's value within five years. So, you know, we're not trying to split hairs. But that's, we do it off of today's value. And so it's very, and I'm the one who sets those.
That's great.
So if I were to just break it down, you have the naming policy that really is to garner more financial support?
That's part of its function. I mean, it certainly...
Would that be that, like, if you were to break it down to 50/50, do you think it's, like, you've got the memorials?
Right. That's my point. It's not all about philanthropy, but the policy certainly supports that, but it's also about memorial as well.
Okay.
And we...
And they cross over sometimes?
Oh, sure. Sure. No question at all. We had one recently for a faculty member who had passed away, but didn't necessarily make the five-year rule, meaning they had not been dead for five years. But they had, unbeknownst to any of us, until we looked, is that they had been very, very generous in their philanthropy. And so therefore, we probably would have done both, we would have done the other in time, but the philanthropy allowed us to do it now.
Do you know, is that 20% figure, is that common across institutions like IU? Does it vary with, you know, smaller liberal arts colleges? Do you know?
So when we developed the policy, early on in President McRobbie's tenure, we did research other universities, and for large publics, that's within the range. When you get into smaller privates or prominent privates, they may be trying to do 100%. So, because they don't, their range of financial support is different than ours is, in terms of enrollment and everything else. So it's not uncommon for them to say, when we raise 100%, then we'll build the building, or do the project, or whatever. So that's on the private side. On the public side, we're probably within range. The other thing that is being done more often is donors who will allow us to put aside part of their gift for ongoing maintenance and repair and things like that. Doing what I do, I'm very much in favor of that, so that, you know, we have some degree of an endowment to perhaps handle renovations in the future. Good example of that was, not my doing, but back in the 1960s, when the Mets' Carolon was built originally, Dr. Metz did put aside money at that time for the replacement and repair of the belts. That money sat for a long time, and sure enough, we got to the point where we needed to use it, and we built the new Carolon, and that's how we did it, was based on money that he had given us 50-some years ago.
So, did I understand that the naming policy's only been around since McRobbie's been president?
Correct.
Okay.
There have been other naming policies and other naming committees, but the one that I'm sharing with you is what we're working off of now. My sense is, is that today's policy is more friendly, is more prescriptive to philanthropy than maybe previous ones were, given the 20% rule that I talk about.
I'm assuming that's for buildings that the university has decided it wants to build, and it needs, and it's not something that the donor comes and says he'd like?
Absolutely. Thank you for asking that question. We build things based on need, and we're not in a position ever where a donor, I'm not saying it doesn't happen, donors, you know, every once in a while, will ask, wouldn't the university want to do X? And, you know, we might have the uncomfortable position of saying, no, that's really not something that we need at the moment, or fit our mission. So we start with a project that has a need, and then try to raise money for that, and that's where the naming opportunities come. Another important distinction is that, in our case, the money doesn't necessarily have to be used for that space. So think of, again, this room. If you wanted to name this room with a gift, well, this room, very nice, right? But you may need something else in the library. You could use that money for something else, but you're going to name this space to recognize the donor. We do that quite a bit. And think of in terms of renovations, or, not renovations, spaces in a renovated building, spaces in a building that have already been built. So we don't need the money to, you know, to offset... So we don't need the money to, you know, to offset any bill for building that building, but the academic program where that building, it may need faculty endow, you know?
And then all your donors are pretty much aware of that from the get-go?
They may, yes. And we do naming agreements and?
Okay, so you do have another step where it's an agreement?
Yes. You know, gifts at that level usually require some degree of?
And there's nothing that the legislature, State of Indiana, since it's a state school, dictates or guides or makes you do it this way or that way? Nothing?
No. I think many of you know, you know, our philanthropic arm is the IU Foundation. And so that's where that money goes. And that's a private entity.
Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
Thank you very much.
My pleasure to be here. If you have any questions going forward, be happy to take a look at them.
Thank you. Have a great evening.
I hope we have some questions going forward.
I hope you have great opportunities going forward.
That's great. Thank you.
Good. Thank you.
And next, we have an update on the Southwest Branch from Greer Carson.
Evening, everyone. Just a few quick updates. We presented our request for approval of our Series A and B bonds to the Monroe County Council at their Tuesday, June 8 meeting. Presentation included a discussion of our mission and strategic goals, as well as our financial plan for the construction of the Southwest Branch and ongoing operational costs. We're delighted to report that the council not only approved the sale of these bonds, but also took time to generously praise MCPL for our fiscal stewardship, management of services throughout the pandemic, and lasting importance for our community. Enthusiasm for the outstanding presentation on the part of Ryan Fetters of Baker Tilly and Marilyn herself was matched only by the council's enthusiasm and support for the branch. It was an encouraging and gratifying moment in the branch planning process and a significant milestone. We've also been reviewing options for interior lighting with Circle Design. This is an important step to ensure that the spaces in the new building are well-lit and that the entire building is inviting. And we recently got our first peek at digital renderings that give a real sense for the look and feel of the building and its many unique spaces, and we can't wait to share these with everyone. At next month's meeting, we'll be presenting completed construction documents for your review. If approved, those documents will be included in our request for bids and form the basis for moving into the construction phase this fall. Happy to answer any questions.
They're so close. Not a question, but I would hope that we could all go as a board and look at it together before the digging starts, before everything, so we can see the before and the after.
We can certainly do that.
I've driven around the roundabout.
Even before the roundabout, yeah. No, when the leadership team took a trip out there a month or so ago, and I think it was so helpful for everyone to be able to wrap their heads around where it was, what it might look like, get an idea that just the feel of the space, it was very nice. I'm happy to take anyone out there individually if you'd like as well.
Okay.
Thank you, Greer.
Thank you.
And now we're on to new business, a revision to the checkout policy on page 78 of our packet. And this is an action item?
This is an action item. And there is, there are quite a few just minor changes that are related to some of the language that we use, but there's one significant change in it. Let me find it. What page did you say?
We'll get our motion, and then we can look in detail. Is there a motion to approve revision to the checkout policy?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. So you want to highlight those major changes?
Yeah, the major change is related to a change, and you would have seen it in your director's report as well. We're changing the name of Homebound Service to House Calls. And so this policy makes that update to call it House Call Patrons under issuing cards and other places. And beyond that, it's just changing customers to patrons in most places. And I believe there was one change at the top that was a little different. When an account with lost materials or unpaid fines is turned over to a collection agency, we no longer turn it over to a collection agency, so that was stricken from the policy as well.
I noticed that we changed the word customer to patron. I like that.
Pardon?
I like that.
Yes, we did. It was somewhat inconsistent in the document to begin with, so now it's all back.
Any other questions or discussions? Seeing none, all in favor of approving the revised checkout policy, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. And do we have a motion to approve our next item, the PERF resolution?
So moved.
We have a motion in a second, and Kyle's going to review this with us.
Hello. So this hadn't happened before. We recently, pardon me, hired a new employee who had retired but then decided to come back to the workforce as a full-time employee. And as part of that, they were going to miss out on their contributions to their PERF account. They were a prior PERF employee at IU, they moved here. With the recent changes, recent meaning since like 2016 or something like that, the PERF is acknowledging that people aren't staying in the same place for 30 years. They're moving and, you know, changing, coming back to the workforce and back and forth. So we want to be able to offer that employee the same benefit that we offer all other full-time employees, and that's what this resolution is about. It would apply to any employee that had the same situation, which I think will not be very common. And this is what would permit us to make that offer.
It's at the same rate as any other employee?
As everybody else. It's the only change. And just as an FYI, they still, they have not put out their rates for 2022, so we couldn't bundle the resolutions.
And this looks like a standard form from PERF that?
Yes.
That government bodies use to do this?
This is their form. I worked with them, passed it by them. It's been, you know, totally approved by the folks that we work with in PERF.
So really, all this does is allow them to opt back into PERF?
Okay, I couldn't quite hear you.
So this allows them to just opt back into PERF? That's really what this is doing?
Yes. Only if they're in, yeah, and only if they're in the hybrid plan. So it's people that may have been in the old PERF plan, or, you know, it's still not old, but, you know, the traditional one, this allows them to participate in the newer one, which has vesting at different, you know, times of, you know, the vesting schedules is graduated, rather than you need to be employed for 20 years or whatever.
So I wonder if this is even possible. So you said that if they were in the hybrid plan, what if they weren't in the hybrid plan? Is that a possibility? What happens then? Do they lose out?
You know, I do not know that. I would assume that if it's, if that flexibility is built into the hybrid plan, but to be retired and taking benefit is the real crux of the situation. So I'd have to find that out for you.
Yeah. It could be possible in this day and age.
The other piece of this is that? PERF rules allow a person that's retired to do this, but this resolution allows us to pay it.
Oh, I see. So it's basically your kind of guidance and your?
It says, yes, we will contribute.
Okay. Where you could opt to say, we're not, right?
We could.
Yeah, okay. I'm glad we are.
Currently, we're not.
Oh, okay.
Because it hasn't come up, there wasn't a reason to ask for this, and it wasn't possible prior to the hybrid plan.
Okay. When did the hybrid come into being, 2016?
2016 for us. It was available to other state entities, but not to the libraries and, pardon me, political subdivisions.
Interesting.
Any other questions? All in favor of approving the PERF resolutions, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Thank you, Kyle. And our update this month is from the Friends of the Library, our wonderful partner. And Emily Bedwell, president of the Friends, is here to talk to us. Welcome, Emily.
Thank you so much for having me. Pardon me. It's been an exciting year already for the Friends. In addition to getting back into the habit of meeting regularly after we all figured out Zoom and working toward a greater collaboration between the Friends and the library, one of the main goals for this year was for us to look at the new Southwest Branch and how we might partner with the library and the community. The Friends Board knows that this is a once-in-a-generation opportunity to leave a legacy in our community. Our commitment to the MCPL is unwavering, and we are excited to support this new branch now and in the future. We believe that the strength of our community lies in public libraries and their unique positioning to be centers of growth, learning, and civil engagement. We're excited to partner with the MCPL in funding the Southwest Branch as just one more way the Friends support the vision and values of the library. So I'm very excited to announce today on behalf of the Friends that we are committed to donating $650,000 to the new Southwest Branch project. The majority of this money, $600,000 of it, comes from our endowments and funds. In addition, the library board itself is committed to donating $10,000 through our members, and we are going to launch a moderate capital campaign at our annual meeting next Sunday to raise that additional $40,000 and maybe more, who knows? So there are a couple ways you, as trustees and library board members, can help. Please consider joining us for our annual meeting next Sunday at 2:00. We're still on Zoom. You can register on the library website, just click on the Friends link. We'd love to see you there as we talk about the new branch. Marilyn's going to give a great presentation. We're going to share the vision with the Friends, get them excited, and we're going to celebrate last year because even though it was unique, there are still things to celebrate. And second, this is your time to join us in raising funds for the branch as well. We know that as a board leads, so goes their community. The support you can offer to this fundraising will be invaluable as the Friends continue to support the library, the programs, the staff, and our community. You can donate directly on the Friends page of the website by cash or check, taking it up to Mary Jean, getting it to Marilyn. I will take your money, we're not picky. So thank you for considering a gift to help support the Friends as we support the MCPL. And that's all I have to say, and I'm just really excited to get to share that news. And if you have any questions or anything, I would be happy to entertain them.
Thank you so much. That's wonderful news. And before you announced it, I said what a great partner you were for the library, and that certainly confirms it. So thank you very much. And as you did tonight, you know, please continue to let us know how we can help. Other questions, comments?
Comment? I enjoy having the 20% of my eating out transfer over to Friends of the Library.
We love the dine-outs, they're a great partner. There's still two, is there two Tuesdays left in June? Because it's a five-Tuesday month that you can go to Lenny's. It's at Lenny's this month on Tuesday nights. Starts at 4:00, so you can't go for lunch, but you can go in the evening and support the library.
I've taken advantage of two for Lenny's this month.
I've done that several times, trust me. It's like, oh, it's every week? Okay, well, one less meal I have to make. So we're very excited, so thank you.
I don't know if this is a comment for you or a comment for Marilyn. I don't, I think it's been in my brain, I don't know if I asked, but at the new branch, is there going to be the Friends of the Library bookstore there, or is it just going to be here?
It is just here.
Okay.
Room at the new branch for that.
Room, okay.
Right. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Emily. And now it's time for public comment. If there are members of the public who would like to address the board, please come to the podium, state your name, and share your thoughts with us. Are we still doing Zoom?
We have no members.
Okay. With no members of the public to address us, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We have a motion in a second. We're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.